7:05, I would like to call the meeting to work. And we will start with the pledge of allegiance. Please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we have a little bit of business to get out of the way. I'm approving the minutes from the August 5th board meeting and the August 22nd Board of Trustees workshop meeting. May I have a motion to approve? So moved. Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, edits? Did everyone get a chance to read them? You can always push them off if you want.
No questions.
Okay, then, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, next item on business is our public hearing for our wastewater treatment plant upgrade phase two, SECRE. I need a motion to open. Oh, no. The public hearing is open, so I don't need to open it. So we can just acknowledge that we are having a public hearing. And if there's anyone from the public who would like to make a statement, please feel free. If you'd just stand up and stand at the podium and give your name and where you live, ballpark.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, right over there.
Yeah, we live right over there.
And your name for the record?
I'm pointing behind me. My name is Jim Rogers.
Thank you.
My thumb is pointed behind me, slightly south here. I wasn't prepared to, I wanted to hear more about what was happening before I commented, but, and I'll admit that I have not followed all of the ins and outs of how this is going to work. I know that there is an environmental review process. I assume it's going under. And I have one question and concern about the pond that is there that the plan to put some pipes through that pond. It's an emerging wetland. It's, this year was the first time that we've had, I guess they're blue herons there, and they nested there, and they had a, there was all of a sudden a smaller one towards the end of the summer. So I'm assuming that that was a nest.
Can imagine what happened, right?
Yes, I'm putting the pieces together, thank you. And several species of turtle and frog, and it's full of fish, and that's what attracts the ducks and the geese and the heron and all that stuff. So I wonder, A, if it's necessary to go put the pipes through the pond. I wonder, B, if there's some more vigorous or intense level of environmental review that might or might not be required, given that it is categorized as an emerging wetland. I don't have the answers to these questions. And then the last piece I get is, as I quickly looked over before I came here, it looks like we'd be expanding it to include access to parcels that are not only not developed yet, but where the development of that area hasn't even been in front of the village at all. And I know that it's supposed to be, that there were some old plans. They've expired, a whole new, I guess that's Anderson, I think it's called, across from the community center. I think I have that right. And that if that's true, we don't even have a proposal before the village about what it would look like and what would go in there. And do we, does it make sense to spend money now for a development that may or may not happen based upon all the review that's going to happen? And we don't know how big it's going to be because it hasn't even been proposed yet, let alone approved. So would it be better to include more of the village, different parts of the village, instead of something that isn't built yet? And I think those were my, oh, and lastly, is it possible for a property in that zone to opt out if they want to? So that's my, those are my two comments and one question.
Gotcha. Perhaps our attorney can help us out on the wetland part?
Sure, so I was just conferring with the village engineer, and you're talking about the pond near the W?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
So.
It comes and goes in size.
Right.
Should I speak at the podium?
Sure.
Yeah.
Please use the mic.
Nope.
There's a mic there you need to turn on.
I was looking for something to stick in there.
Yeah, no.
Are we on?
You probably just need to turn it on and then speak into the mic and it'll, it's on the side.
Hello? You good?
I'm good.
So obviously, we're not going to put pipes in the existing pond, but you're talking about the pond that formed this past year, spring?
No, no, the pond that's been there for 100 years.
Behind the library?
Behind the library.
Yeah, so there'll be no pipes running through that pond?
Okay.
It'll be around the edge, right?
Right. We have to get to the subject tanks of the existing properties. There's no benefit of running through the water?
Thus, there would be, our, heron are not protected animals, are they?
I don't believe they're on the endangered species list.
I didn't think so. So the issue of disturbing them would be on the edge, and so therefore, it would be unlikely to be disturbing them. But if it's an emerging wetland, we need to follow the proper procedure as it relates to that.
Well, you know, DEC is changing the wetlands classification, starting in 2025, so there may be different rules that are applicable to it moving forward. I don't know, when you guys did your analysis, if you reviewed it under the current wetland regs or the ones that are draft proposed?
Under the current. But I guess the thought to keep in mind is we're in the beginning of the process, not the end. So everything right now is conceptual. And once, as things get more refined and become permanent, then you apply for a wetland disturbance permit if it's needed, whether you're in the buffer or the actual wetland. But those, you know, that's still to come later.
Right, but the plan, to be clear, there's no drilling through the wetland, and the village will take measures to avoid impacts to any regulated area.
Absolutely, yep.
And then as far as opting out, there's no option to opt out. If you're in the sewer service area, you are.
You are, yes, you are opted in, right. And the question about a development project, again, because we're in the conceptual phase, there are proposed developments. You're correct, you actually don't have any of them in front of the planning board at this moment. It's a little bit of a chicken and egg because without the sewer capacity, they can't do their project, any of the three of them. And so we would like to encourage the opportunity for those development projects to proceed. We did, as a board, pass a resolution, and we were awarded a pro housing community certificate. And so we would like to be supportive of the development of housing in a way that is consistent with the village. So by, so there are two things. One is by providing the potential for sewer doesn't approve the project. So there are many other pieces to that. Also, the point at which we have to pull the final trigger, we would need some assurances that they would continue forward because they would be paying for a portion of this project. So that would be, that is a reason to include them because it would add to the number of beneficial units that are contributing to the cost of the project. So I think that covered everything. Did that cover all your questions?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
I didn't expect it would be answered "thank you" for answering.
And just to add, as a proprietor that went through the process, the engineers did work with us. They went over the plans, they changed things when we asked them to. So it is a fluid process.
Thanks.
Yeah, no, I will say, we appreciate the fact that you're looking at it. Many, many a project people don't look at until something starts happening. So we appreciate the fact that you're looking into it and encourage. And the long-term goal is to have the entire village supported by municipal sewer. We just need to do it in chunks. Because this one is 20 million, so we, and again, depending on the grants that we receive, will ultimately determine what size project this is going to be. But we wanted to go with what we hope to do in this phase. But the plan is to also do the rest of the village in phase three or four, depending on how it goes. Thanks, Jen, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thank you, Robert.
Thanks, Robert.
Let's see, there is no one, there's no one waiting to join us on Zoom. Madam Attorney, do we close the public hearing and then go through SECRE?
Yes.
So I would take a motion to close the public hearing. So moved. Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, the next part is, we go through part two and part three of the full environmental assessment form. I'm not going to go line by line, but I am going to go by group. And if anyone has a question or wants clarification or what have you, we have the people here who can help us. And so part two is the identification of potential project impacts. And I don't know if I, do I need to read the responses related to lead agency? We've gotten responses and everyone has consented to our being lead agency, so I can just put that out there. Okay, so the first item is impact on land. Proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site. Certainly, the answer is yes. However, the answers are generally no or small impact may occur. Two is impact on geological features. Proposed action may result in the modification or destruction of or inhibit access to any unique or unusual landforms on the site, such as cliffs, dunes, minerals, fossils, caves. No, is the answer on that one. And just interrupt me if you have a question or want clarification. Impacts on surface water. Proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies. The answer to that is yes. However, all of the specific questions, the answer is no or small impact may occur. And similar to what we just spoke about for the sometimes small and sometimes large pond off Fisk Street, because it'll be around the edge, the impact will be small, if at all. Impact on groundwater. The proposed action may result in new or additional use of groundwater or may have the potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or an aquifer, and the answer to that would be no. Impact on flooding. The proposed action may result in development on land subject to flooding. The answer is no. Impacts on air. Proposed action may include state-regulated air emission source. The answer to that is no. Impact on plants and animals. The proposed action may result in loss of flora or fauna. The answer is yes. However, all of the specific questions around that, the answer is no or small impact may occur. Impact on agricultural resources. Proposed action may impact agricultural resources. The answer to that is no. Impact on aesthetic resources. The land use of the proposed action are obviously different from or are in sharp contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project and a scenic or aesthetic resource. The answer to that would be no. Impact on historic and archaeological resources. Proposed action may occur in or adjacent to a historic or archaeological resource. The answer to that is yes. However, all of the specific questions, the answer is no or small impact may occur. Number 11, impact on open space and recreation. Proposed action may result in the loss of recreational opportunities or a reduction of an open space resource as designated in any adopted municipal open space plan. The answer to that is no. Impact on critical environmental areas. Proposed action may be located within or adjacent to a critical environmental area. The answer to that is no. Impact on transportation. The proposed action may result in a change to existing transportation systems. The answer to that is yes. For things like projected traffic increase may exceed capacity. No, that's not, all the answers, the answers to all of that is no or small impact. And I guess I'm just.
Mainly relate to temporary, impacts temporary during construction.
Thank you, that was going to be my question. I'm like, I don't think it's, yes, got it. Number 14, impact on energy. Proposed action may cause an increase in the form of, in the use of any form of energy. The answer to that is no. Mainly because we can use existing, we will use electricity, but not in a significant way.
Right, we won't be generating the need for new substation or new transmission lines.
Thank you. Impact on noise, odor, and light. Proposed action may result in an increase in noise, odors, or outdoor lighting. Answer to that is yes. And I just want to clarify, there've been, we've had.
Reporting in progress.
We've had some complaints about odor at the wastewater treatment plant after the project we just completed. And to clarify, the odor control system was actually installed incorrectly. And we have now reinstalled the odor control system, and it is working as it is supposed to. We even got a, we even got a note, a thank you note from someone who had complained in the past, saying, you fixed it, thank you. So that should not be a concern because odor control systems actually do work when they're installed properly. So the answer is yes. However, on all the detailed questions, the answer is no or small impact may occur. Number 16, impact on human health. The proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants. The answer to that is yes.
So you could change that to a no. It's a yes because the person that completed the forms wanted to be able to express that you're actually eliminating some of the runoff that's going down into the aquifer now.
Ah, so it's a positive impact? Okay. I mean, I can understand in both directions, so.
I think it's noted in the part three, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's what, it's noted in the part three?
I mean.
Explain further.
It's explained in the part three a little further. But like I said, you can go either way because there's a note in the part three. So that everyone's aware of the benefit.
It is a benefit, right? That's the whole point, that the wetland hall of it will benefit from not having everyone's stuff.
What I would recommend then, if you're going to keep it as yes, is in N where it says other impacts, write in like benefit to community by removing, what is it? Waste from.
Reswatter pollution, yeah.
What pollution you say?
I would say wastewater pollution.
Reducing.
Because the idea is that we're replacing off everyone's systems that are super old, right? For the system that's.
Well, not everyone's system is necessarily old, but we are replacing individual systems that could potentially be not 100% airtight or watertight. All right, benefit to community by reducing wastewater pollution?
Impacts.
Impacts, thank you. And is that a no or small impact? Or is that a moderate to large impact?
Small.
Okay. Everybody okay with leaving that as a yes? Consistency with community plans. The proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plans. The answer to that is no. Consistency with community character. The proposed project is inconsistent with the existing community character, and the answer is yes. Why would the answer be yes?
Yeah, I think it's an error.
I think that if you look into the part three, I believe this was checked yes because of the potential growth inducing impacts. That once you put in a sewer, it's going to enable the community to develop.
But we're going to do that within the character of the community, so.
So, I mean, you can change that to no. If you have the part three, we can look at what it says, and then. I mean, I agree, it could be, it should be marked as no. And then we can address the growth inducing impacts in the part three.
Yeah, we mark this down in mine, right?
We're going to mark it no.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the last one. So I do have, I do have part three here. No impacts have been identified that will have a moderate to large impact on the environment for the reasons set forth in the attached notice of determination of significance. Upon review of the information. Additional support information is the engineering report dated June 20, 2024, with attachments to ship a letter of no effect dated August 29, 2024. And considering both magnitude and importance of each identified potential impact is the conclusion of the Village of Red Hook Village Board as lead agency that this project, I don't see any notes.
If you scroll down, yeah, some of it's actual. If you scroll down to where the questions are, to go to like page one, the bold part are the answers or the explanations.
On page one of part three?
If we go, are you looking at the same? Oh, you're on, you're on part three, I thought you were. This is the attachment to part three.
Oh, you know what, yeah, I didn't print out the attachment to part three. Sorry.
Okay, so.
So you can, you can be honest.
That should say, you know, see attached, and then this is the notice of.
No, set forth in the notice, the attached notice of determination of significance.
Right, and then, so you have a prelude narrative that's attached. And so, you know, everything we've talked through. But for instance, I'll read to you. Question 18, character of the community. We should modify, you haven't identified a potential small impact. It says, the village already has an established wastewater treatment plant and municipal sewer system. The extension of this system to approximately 170 additional properties may allow for more intensive development of those properties, but only within the confines of the existing zoning law. Any changes to the zoning law in the future permit additional growth will undergo additional SECRE review. And then it talks about it being a potential environmental justice area. So for every question that we reviewed that was a potential yes, there's a section here setting forth all the information on why it doesn't rise to the level of significant impact.
Oh, of course it is. And Jen hopefully is not printing out more copies. Do you want me to go stop her? Thank you. So because we have these notes, should we leave that as a yes?
It's up to you. I mean, I, we, it is addressed here, and the language will stay here except that we'll just cross out the first sentence. So it just says, the village has already established. So there's still a narrative supporting if the question comes up.
Okay. Yeah, I guess the is inconsistent with the existing community character does, I don't like saying yes to that.
The way the questions are worded, it doesn't, I mean, in that form, the questions are all printed one way, and then they twist it to be double negative in the last two questions. It's very confusing.
Maybe it's making sure we're still paying attention by the time we get to the end, I don't know.
But those are some of the more important questions in many communities.
Yeah. Okay, so I'm hopeful leaving that as a no. You guys okay with that?
Yes, I think that makes sense.
So then I would recommend you cross out that first sentence of 18.
Okay, and so the village has identified a potential small impact, so we'll just, yeah, we'll just delete that. And start with the village already has and established. Got it. That works. Okay.
Were there any other questions or answers that you wanted to discuss?
Not for me, but anybody else?
After SECRE goes through, what are the next steps?
For the, like, for permitting the sewer system?
We're being wrong.
So, once you have the, your map set, you would do a resolution to expand the sewer system for your engineering comments, and you have to get your two approvals. You can use that by resolution. And then when you're ready to actually identify and firm up the parcels that are going to be impacted, we're going to do an apportionment hearing. So we'll have to come up with the numbers that you anticipate each homeowner is going to be paying, get some of the size of the system. And then the system costs, so you're going to have to have some final numbers too, are allocated amongst all of the landowners. And that's as the public hearing.
Right. And we want to get an indication of what kind of grant funding we're going to get, I think, before we go down that road too far. So it's a little bit of a parallel process of what grants are we getting so that we can determine what, you know, what the cost is and how we want to handle the project. So it's a little bit of, we'll do a little of this, a little of that, a little bit of dance.
In the sewer use area, is it just being added to the existing area or are they different? How does that work?
So the village went through a map and plan process in 2017 when it, when it first established the sewer system. And that map and plan did call for the full storage of the entire village.
Okay.
So arguably, we're not amending the map and plan, but when you do get your sewer area, you might go back and see if it's consistent. But then the sewer area is just an extension of what exists. And so we have to adopt a resolution designating the new expanded sewer use area by lot numbers and parcel numbers. Because in your sewer regulations, you define the sewer use area as the area established by resolution of Village Board and within 100 feet of the sewer. So we're likely to do that step.
Okay. All right, so part three. This is really already said, basically, it says, this project will result in no significant adverse impacts on the environment, and therefore, an environmental impact statement need not be prepared. Accordingly, this negative declaration is issued, which then leads us to the. I have it here somewhere. The resolution. Thank you. Okay, and this is resolution 27. Whereas by resolution dated July 15, 2024, the Village of Red Hook Village Board declared its intent to act as State Environmental Quality Review Act or SECRE lead agency in a coordinated review for the wastewater treatment plant and step sewer system upgrade phase two hereafter the project. And whereas the project was classified as a type one SECRE action, and whereas each involved agency was notified by letter of the village's intent to act as lead agency and provided with part one of the full assessment, full environmental assessment form. And whereas no other agency objected to the village leading as, serving as lead agency within 30 days of circulation of the notice of intent. Whereas the board has reviewed parts one, two, and three of the full environmental assessment form. And information obtained through its own knowledge, the public hearing, its consultants, and other agencies, and has sufficient information on which to base a determination of significance. And whereas the board has considered the criteria contained in 6 NY-CRR 617.7, and thoroughly analyzed all identified relevant areas of environmental concern. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Red Hook Village Board shall be and hereby confirms its designation as SECRE lead agency. The Village of Red Hook Village Board hereby determines that the proposed project will not have a significant adverse environmental impact on the environment for the reasons set forth in the negative declaration attached here too, and made a part of this resolution and adopted on this date. The village mayor is hereby authorized and directed to sign part three of the full environmental assessment form. of the full environmental assessment form, indicating thereon that an environmental impact statement will not be prepared. The village clerk is hereby directed to publish notice of the determination of significance in the environmental notice bulletin? To publish the notice of determination of significance?
Yep, that's, I mean, that's the...
That's the terminology or whatever. "In the environmental notice bulletin, and to make all other filings required by law and six NY-CRR part 617 dot 11." May I have a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you. Kim, second?
Second.
Thank you, Mel Corca. Any questions? Comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Troy, is it just part three that has to be attached to the resolution, or is it part one, two, and three?
It's part three with this.
With that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that, I think we have concluded our phase two work. I, we have a matter of employment to review, so I would like to propose that we go into executive session to review the qualifications of a potential, a potential police officer. May I have a motion to go into executive session for that move? Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We will go upstairs, and we will certainly be back with much, much business to continue. Shall we run upstairs?
Aye, Dawn.
Thank you. Thank you both very much. I need a motion to reopen the public session.
So moved.
Thank you. Kim, I'll take you as a second.
We're missing Mel Corca on time. Yeah, I'm sorry, I closed my...
Oh.
I apologize.
I hear your voice. But I'm gonna say all in favor?
Aye.
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 Great. Oh, yes and no, I need to admit you. There you go. Okay, and so I would like to make a motion that we accept the recommended appointment of David Schmitz as a part-time police officer. We are appointing, I'm making a motion to appoint David Schmitz as a part-time police officer with the Red Hook Police Department. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mel Corca. I'll just take this moment to say we look forward to having you be part of the Red Hook Police Department. We're grateful that you are, you will be part of the team. And, oh, I guess I can say, we, David Schmitz, retired state police officer with a long list of really good experience that will be a real benefit to the police department, and he will also be part of the school resource officer team. Any other questions, comments? Most welcome. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
David, could you spell your last name for me, please?
Yes.
TZ?
Yes.
I was gonna get that wrong. And just come and see me within the next 30 days, you have to sign your oath of office with me.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Patrick?
Yes?
There's a key being due that you...
Oh, yeah. Bring it back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Good stuff. All right, so the next item on the agenda is Archtop Fiber. You have a micro trenching construction agreement. Archtop Fiber, we have, we've had Archtop Fiber here presenting to us, they are an internet company. They are laying fiber in a variety of different municipalities. This agreement mirrors the agreement in Kingston and also in the Village of Rangbeck. What it, Archtop, I didn't bring my notes, so I'm not gonna get it exactly correct, but Archtop Fiber is a certified, it's a certified public utility of some sort, and so they, by state law, have the right to lay their fiber in our, in the right of ways, in the road right of ways. This is a means to work collaboratively, and where they aren't able to put their fiber, their fiber lines in the shoulder, if you will, a lot of our roads, particularly the village roads have, well, all the village roads, that's all we're talking about, because we have no jurisdiction over the state roads. We don't have a sidewalk, and so they can just be in the ground, which makes that very easy. But when it comes to roads, paved roads, where there are sidewalks, their micro trenching is, and you'll see it in the, in the agreement, their micro trenching dimensions are one inch wide and 12 inch deep. So it's, it's very minimal, the disruption to the paved road. And so this is, we are giving them permission to do that. Jake has been involved with, with this process, and we do get, they will be paying us 30 cents a linear foot. And they, there's a, Archtop is providing a five-year guarantee on the workmanship of the micro trenching. They agree to be responsible for maintenance-related issues relative to their micro trenching during that time period. The other piece in this agreement is, they agree to add services. On page two, you'll see, "Understanding that there are village facilities that have not yet been served by the incumbent provider and lack critical broadband connectivity, Archtop agrees to build fiber to the following village facilities at no cost to the village: Veterans Memorial Park, Richard M. Abraham's Memorial Park, Municipal Parking Lot on Prince Street, and the wastewater treatment plant." We don't have to have them do that, but this seemed like a perfect opportunity to have internet service, should that be something that we wanted to use in the future. And also, there's a services agreement. "In recognition of the village's willingness to partner with Archtop to ensure that their construction of a next-generation fiber network in Red Hook is economically viable and timely, Archtop is prepared to offer a deep discount of 20% for any telecommunications services purchased by the village." So those are the benefits to the village. And and then this is just an agreement that we will work together. And it also goes back to, again, they can do this without us, they have the right. In speaking with their key person, he said, "We prefer to work collaboratively." So I will say that they have actually already begun work in Red Hook Estates. So this seemed to be a way for us to benefit from, and I do believe that this will be a positive to the villagers because it will give everyone a choice for their internet service provider. They are claiming that they will have really good prices. It's fiber network, so it is the best and the fastest. The benefit also to the village, we will have to look at their pricing and determine if this is what we want to do, but fiber has the same upload speed as it does download speed. For the police department, particularly with the body camera footage, it is stored in the cloud, so after every shift, the police officers put their body camera in the holder, and it uploads, it uploads the video. If we had fiber, it would go a whole lot faster. Now, I believe it takes 10 to 15 minutes. It used to take half an hour, so we did make an improvement. So anyway, this is both why it's coming to you now, because now's our moment. And it is, it has also been vetted by our village attorney, who is also the village attorney for the Village of Rangbeck, who's already signed this agreement. So I guess I would ask, is anybody having questions?
Does the, being that the micro trenching only goes down 12 inches, is that anyway affected by like our freezing point with our colder temperatures through the winter, if a general trenching is up to 48 inches? Knowing that the ground can freeze?
No, they, I am told that 12 inches is plenty deep to keep it from, it does not freeze. The other thing that, that they have indicated is that they have a backup system, so that when all the other internet services go down, theirs doesn't. So, or in a big storm, and again, that's the benefit to being in the road as opposed to being on the, you know, above the wire, is in a storm, you're more likely to keep your internet. And, and Archtop has told me that their system is set up where it's got redundancy, so that, so on the, on the state roads, they're gonna, they're gonna have to be on the poles, because the state's too slow, frankly, is my understanding. So they could have a pole that goes down, but again, they've got a redundant system, so that if it can't go this way, it can go that way. If you want something more technical than that, I can have Archtop folks come and tell you about it. But so that in a storm, they are much more likely to, to actually stay up and, and active, which frankly is important. Any other questions?
Will the, will we get basically as-built maps once they've done their trenching, so we will have maps showing the location of all the micro trenches?
I, I mean, I have a map of where they're intending to go. I'm not sure that, I can certainly ask, I don't know if they're gonna put it into a, you know, it's currently on a, I don't know what system they're using, if that's, you know, I'm not sure it's going to be a digital map that we can upload to Diamond Maps, if that's where you're headed.
Yeah, I mean, it would certainly, I think, be great if we could get, you know, downloadable digital files, GPS files.
It's certainly worth asking. I do know the, ironically, the benefit is because we have to, we, the, well, we, the highway department has to, has to map out all the lines, identify all the lines, because, I mean, the dig requests are coming in fast and furious. So there's a portion of, of Red Hook Estates that they actually have, have now done. And I had mentioned to our highway foreman, I said, "You're capturing this for our Diamond Maps," and he said, "Oh, yeah," he said, "This is..." What was the word he used? Some of it is not well-charted territory, so there's a silver lining. So certainly having all of our systems in our Diamond Map system will be very beneficial. The, the fiber is, it's going kind of in a line along the road, is pretty much where it's going. The other part of it is they have what they call flower pots.
Yeah.
And then something else.
With the presentation.
And so there, there are those every, I don't know how many feet, so it's, and those have a top, you can see those.
That's at ground level, yeah.
Yeah, but that's, that's a great question. I'll certainly ask if we can, I mean, we'll get something, I don't know if it'll be sort of uploadable. But we'll certainly have the, the map. Any other?
How long is the construction supposed to take?
I mean, they said they can do 800, they can lay 800 feet in a day or something. They had a lot of people here.
That's on one crew, they're adding a second.
Now, the good news, the other silver lining is, we've got cherry engraves. Their, their stuff will go underneath the paving, so, because they will definitely not be trenching into our brand-new pavement. So they'll just do it before it gets paved.
I have one question about, so if they're doing the, laying the stuff now, and they have to sign this contract after we do, right? Is it retroactive? Like, is it for everything they've already laid?
It is, yes, so if you look, somewhere in here is the number of linear feet that we have, and their person has reviewed this and said, "We are good with this." So it's the whole, so we have 8.4 miles, 8.4 million linear mo, no. Yeah, it's 8.4, well, 8.4 miles, not million miles, I don't know where I am. 8.4 miles, linear feet. Miles of linear road, let me get that right, which is 40, it's in here somewhere, oh, it's on the first page, 44,352 linear feet. And that is actually as designated by the state, or as recorded by the state. So, yeah, we get the whole thing. They're not saying, "Yeah, we're gonna start from today," it's from the beginning. In the end, you take that 44,000, it's about $13,000, it's not a huge, based on what they're doing. It's no, it's not a big deal for them, and it's, it's at least a positive for us. It's a something. Any other questions? With that, then I'll take a motion to authorize me to sign the, this micro trenching construction agreement with Archtop Fiber.
So moved.
Thank you, Charlie. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, the next item we have, so I was reached out to by, I don't remember who it was at this moment, I apologize. Someone who actually has recovered from breast cancer, who asked if we would both pass a proclamation recognizing October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and also being a base for giving out red, sorry, pink light bulbs and pink lights. And it seemed like a very logical thing to do, the proclamation, the one item that I, I would like to change, and here's, here's what I'm gonna propose to change, and then I'll read the whole proclamation. In the, the last, and be it further resolved, there's a, there's a section that references raising funds, et cetera, which I think we've discussed, is not something that's appropriate for the village to be highlighting. It doesn't mean that it's a bad thing, it's all good, but we'd like to, I'd like to limit the proclamation to to the, to the following. Well, let me read the proclamation as is, but it's basically eliminating the last three lines of the, of what's here. Proclamation recognizing October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas breast cancer accounts for 30%, or one in three of all new female cancers each year, the American Cancer Society estimates that there will be 310,000 new cases of breast cancer diagnosed in the United States in 2024. That's a large number. Whereas improvements in early detection and treatment contributed to a 43% decline in breast cancer death rate in the United States in the last 30 years. And whereas Northern Duchess Hospital is building its breast cancer program using cutting-edge treatment protocols and recruiting a team of renowned doctors in the field. And whereas every October during Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we honor those women battling breast cancer, along with the families, researchers, and healthcare providers, whose hard work gives hope to those living with breast cancer. And whereas, we want to encourage all residents, government agencies, and local businesses to participate in activities that will increase awareness of the fight against breast cancer. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Village Board of the Village of Red Hook, do proclaim the month of October 2024 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And be it further resolved that we, the Village Board of the Village of Red Hook, invite the community to join Northern Duchess Hospital's Light the Village Pink Celebration during the month of October, period. You guys good with that?
My question, like, is it, so the Light the Village Pink, not that I'm against the proclamation, but being that it's talking about fundraising, and we've, or, you know, made the suggestion to remove those last three lines, but is there a way that we could just modify it, where we take out the ownership of Light the Village Pink to Northern Duchess? And just say, we invite the community to join, to join in and Light the Village Pink?
How about, how about invite the community to Light the Village Pink during the month of? How about that?
Sounds great. And then also...
Hang on one sec. Invite the community to Light the Village Pink during the month of October. Okay, ready for the next?
The third, whereas down, acknowledging Northern Duchess as a breast cancer program using cutting edge, if we're
We can eliminate that, yep.
Them from the rest of it.
Charlie, you good with that? Charlie, you good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, yep, I'm good with that. Anything else?
No, I, I agree with those ads, thank you.
Okay, uh, I need a motion to approve Resolution 28.
So moved.
Thank you, Kim, um, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Charlie. Uh, and I just wanna comment, I, I greatly appreciate the opportunity to highlight the awareness of breast cancer. Um, I know too many people who've, um, suffered, though I am also grateful to know many people who have recovered from breast cancer, so, um, I think this is a positive thing to do. And we do have pink lights.
I brought you, uh,
Ah, we have bulbs, so we do, we do have some available.
We have many available.
We have many available, so if anyone would like a pink light bulb to put in their front stoop, to turn the village pink, um, come, come see us at Village Hall.
It should last for years.
Is it LED? Well, there you go, it will last for years.
And you only put it in the month of October.
Well, yeah, you can add some red and other things, and, uh, white in, uh, December. Great, so yeah, we've got some pink light bulbs, please, please come get some. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, proclamation, we did that, budget adjustments. No, I have, I have a new item that I'm adding to the agenda. Um, I apologize for, um, the last minute, but, um, this is related to a temporary, um, restriction of parking on Park Avenue. And this is, comes about because the trails, the new trails on Cookingham West, um, are farther along. Sorry, I'm saving my notes here. I guess I hadn't really been focused, I spoke with the supervisor, the town supervisor, last week, and it looks like they will be opening the trails, um, probably in the next few months, next few months, next few weeks. And, um, at the moment, there is no, there's no actual parking lot or parking, um, available, um, for the trails. Um, and the town supervisor has indicated that Park Avenue is a place where people can park, because you can get to the, um, trails, you can get to the southernmost trail through Abraham's Park, which is lovely, however, we don't have a lot of, we really don't have a lot of parking. And currently in our, in our village code, parking is allowed on both sides of Park Avenue. I've actually been thinking for a while that we should probably adjust that, because you, if you're parking opposite, you can't get a, an emergency vehicle in between two cars parked opposite each other. So, um, in consultation with Lieutenant Hildenbrand and with DPW Foreman Smith, I am proposing that we temporarily restrict the parking as follows. No parking on the north side of Park Avenue, and the reason for the north side is because, uh, on Park Avenue, on the north side, there's no curb and there's no sidewalk, so it's just grass. On the south side of Park Avenue, there's a curb and a sidewalk, so that is the logical side for people to park. Secondly, and having no idea how, how popular these trails will be, we also don't want to have, then load up Church Street Extension, which is sort of right around the corner. So no parking on either side of Church Street Extension for 200 feet from Park Avenue. And then no parking on the east side of Church Street Extension after the 200 feet from Park Avenue.
Just so you know that the title and the text don't match, do you want the 100 feet on Church Street?
Oh, you know what, yeah, I changed that, cause I looked at the numbers, so yeah, the title would be 200. So I'll just read the resolution, um, so, resolution to temporarily restrict parking on the north side of Park Avenue and for 200 feet on Church Street Extension. Whereas, the Cookingham West new public trail system will be open to the public within the next few weeks. And whereas, the only current parking to access these trails is street parking. And whereas, a major access point for the Cookingham West Trails is via the Richard M. Abraham's Memorial Park. And whereas, parking for the Richard M. Abraham's Memorial Park is along Park Avenue. And whereas, currently parking is allowed by code on both sides of Park Avenue and Church Street Extension. And whereas, we don't know how popular the new trail system will be, and we want to ensure emergency vehicles can get through, which they cannot if there are two, if there are cars parked on both sides. It's really both sides of both streets, but of both sides of Park Avenue. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the Village Board of Trustees authorizes the temporary restriction of parking, as I read earlier, and also be it further resolved, that a crosswalk will be added across Park Avenue from the sidewalk to the beginning of the, of the path in the Richard M. Abraham's Memorial Park. One caveat to that is, we, what that means is that we need to create a curb cut at the crosswalk, and so it probably won't happen until November, because the DPW Department is up to here with work to do. So that won't happen until where, until the crew was able to do that curb cut, but I wanted to put it in here because that came up as a, as a suggestion, I think that's a great one. We should do that with or without the parking change. So, that is my proposal, because I wanna alleviate an issue that may or may, I mean, if, if it's limited people who come, it's not a big deal, but I, I think it will, I think these trails will be very popular, and I think that's terrific. I just would like to, kind of a problem, you know, sort of head off a problem before it happens. So, any, any questions or thoughts before we discuss?
So, is all the parking restriction gonna be just signage? Or is there gonna be any road striping or painting, or?
So, what I'd like to, I mean, ultimately, I think initially it'll all be signage. What I'd like to do is, since we now have our, um, our paint striping machine, I'd actually love to put a, a yellow line across, um, the north side, at the edge of the road, cause that seems to, that's sort of a standard signal, and then less signs, so we'd have a couple, and then, and then have the, the yellow line that should indicate you can't park there. But again, because this is, this came up so quickly, I wanted to get something in temporarily, because again, I think it's, I think, I'm not sure the exact date of when they will formally open the trails, but I would expect by the end of September they'll be open. So, we have further work to do, I think we can see how it goes, and then I think we need to make a permanent change in our code. But yes, I'm sensing that you would, you would be in favor of less signs, more painting.
Ultimately, I think, and who knows, I mean, we may want to actually designate spaces on the south side, but for now, yeah.
I was gonna say, designate spaces in what way? Just to mark them out as parking spaces?
It's an option.
It is an option, yes, actually, I was gonna say, Mel Corca actually had that thought too, so, I think you all are thinking in the same direction. So we, cause the other positive, I mean, Park Avenue was completely straight, so if we make it feel smaller,
Well, no, no, it says good traffic coming. If it wasn't for, you know, limiting access of emergency vehicles, I would be all for parking on both sides, cause that's really a traffic problem.
Yes, that, yeah, no, it's really the emergency vehicles that makes me, makes me concerned, but that's, cause if people are all off in the trails, and their cars are in the way, and something comes up, that, that's just not gonna be good. Okay, any other, any other thoughts? Then I'll take a motion to approve Resolution Number 29.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Is there a designation on how long it's going to be?
I'll let you know. Okay, budget adjustments. Actually, before we do budget adjustments, I just wanna, I wanna read, um, I know in our last meeting, I talked about the, um, the, um, grant from Assembly Member Kevin Cahill, um, to Red Hook Response. It was to address, um, food insecurity. I think it was about a week after I became mayor, in May of 2021, when Red Hook Response reached out and said, because they were not a nonprofit at that time, uh, they needed a financial, a fiscal sponsor to receive this grant. And of course I said yes, absolutely, um, not knowing what that, I, I still would've said yes, but, um, we literally got that, got the funding from the state, I think, two weeks ago, two or three weeks ago, and then it was at our workshop meeting, I mean, let's say a month ago. And so it was finally handed over to Red Hook Response. I'm sorry, we didn't make a big check and have a big, a big photo op, but we didn't. But I got a very nice note from the, um, Red Hook Response Executive Director, and I just wanted to read that. Dear Mayor Spidey Smith, on behalf of Red Hook Response, I and the board thank you and your staff for supporting our application and receipt of funds for the grant obtained from the state of New York through support from former New York State Assembly Member Kevin Cahill. The support of the Village of Red Hook was instrumental in Red Hook's responsibility to obtain this grant funding, which has made a critical contribution to our operating funds. We are grateful for this and other support received from the Village of Red Hook, and look forward to ongoing and productive collaborations in the future. Um, and just to clarify, that was $48,102, I believe, is the,
I think that's correct.
That's the number, but I just wanted to share that thank you from Red Hook Response. So, as I wrote in my newsletter, good things come to those who wait. They have to wait a long time. Okay, so the next thing is, um, budget adjustments. So you have three, there are three resolutions, let's start with the general fund. The, um, we are in the final, final, final stages of, um, wrapping up last fiscal year. And so these are all the various adjustments for the, um, the various account codes to make the match what we actually spent, and what you will find when you get to the page three is, is we, it was, it, this is a net positive of 120, just about $125,000. We were, we had budgeted to go, to use 130,000 of our fund balance, and, um, we used five. So, um, that shocked me a bit, and so when I looked at it, if you look under the revenue, we actually had $35,000 more revenue than we had, um, originally budgeted. And there are a couple of things that that, primarily, we, the insurance recoveries is, um, Workers Compensation Safety Group, um, we hadn't budgeted for a refund for that, and that's about 13,000. And then we also have infrastructure security that the police provides to, for the water, for the water fund, to, for the water infrastructure that we have, um, and so this is a way to account for that. So that was, that, uh, that honestly, I just forgot to budget. And, uh, and there are just a couple of other items that came in higher, there's a variety of them. And then from a, um, from an expense standpoint, the biggest, cause I have my notes, um, upstairs, there are a couple of big ones, um, that are different. One is snow removal, the general business district issue. General business district clearing, we didn't use any, which, so that's 18,000. The planning project didn't go as quickly as we anticipated, so that's 18,000. And then it's, it's another variety of items, um, that made that change. So, um, just wanted to explain a little bit, I did a better job in mine. There was also some, um, software that we didn't use, again, it's really a lot of, a lot of, a number of things that came in under. So the good news is, that means we now have it back in the fund balance and can use it going forward. So I will take a, uh, motion to accept Resolution 30, which is the budget adjustments to the Village's general fund for the fiscal year ending, which I should've written on here, but I didn't. Fiscal year ending, um, May 24. Oh, got it, it was in that, uh, thank you. It's in the now therefore be it resolved, so I didn't completely. I like it in the title as well, but, at, at least I didn't leave it off completely. Um, may I have a motion to accept these budget adjustments for the general fund? Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, water fund, same thing, this is, uh, we'll see, this one, I had it in the title. Same thing, I will say that the water meter sales came in, um, higher, significantly higher than expected. Um, so, that's, uh, it's always a good thing to go in that direction. So that, that is truly the, the difference. There are a few expense items that were under budget, but not significant. And, uh, so I will take a motion to approve, uh, Resolution 31, for budget adjustments to Village Water Fund for fiscal year ending 3/31/24.
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you, uh, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, now we have sewer fund. Now sewer fund, I have split, um, so you have the, basically the O and M. So if you compare it to the report that our treasurer does, um, it's not exactly, I just pieced it out, um, a little bit. So this first section is the O and M portion. This, the next section at the bottom of the page is the, just the long-term capital. So it's the capital charge and the principal payments that we made. And then, um, on the back of the page, that is specifically for the capital project. I find it easier to follow. And the capital project, there are some things that we, uh, we didn't finish the project in, and finished paying for the project in last fiscal year, so there will be more, um, items in, uh, this fiscal year, which is why it doesn't total out in, in the last fiscal year. So with that, um, and again, for the O and M, we're still sort of finding our way, and determining what, what our costs are, and that'll, that'll continue for another year, as we still continue to figure it out. But I will take a motion to accept, um, to accept Resolution Number 32, for budget adjustments to Village Sewer Fund for fiscal year ending 3/31/24. So moved.
Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
To us.
All right, so that's Mel Corca.
I'll take second.
Kim will take second, excellent. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, I did that, I did that. Okay, and now we are on to Madam Treasurer, with the Treasurer's report.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, this is the Treasurer's report for September 9th, 2024. The account balances as of 8/31/24 are as follows. General Fund, 1,746,803.97.
May I, may I interrupt you just for a moment? Just, I just wanna, um, clarify that the general fund is at 1,707, because we just received all of our taxes, correct? That is, cause that's a high balance.
So, uh, the taxes came in, actually, a couple of months ago. Last month, we were at 1.8 million, so,
We're continuing in that, but we have, we basically get the money at the beginning of the fiscal year, and then spend it all through the year.
Exactly, right, we start high and end low, for sure. Okay, um, and water fund has 301,252.62. Payroll clearing account, 41,420.58. The sewer fund, um, has come down, last month we had 709,000 dollars, and now we have 237,140.78. And as we discussed that last month, it's because happily, the sewer project is all closed out. That reflects all of our final payments being made, so that's awesome. Um, hardscrabble has 19,294.37. Our Village Green account has 8,409.61. The health insurance, uh, fund has 11,292.77. And petty cash has 52.93. The following are our reserve checking balances. Fire Department has 10,315.54. Police, 17,725.50. Highway, 591.89. The snow reserve, 3,405.91. Tower reserve, 18,300. Tower Reserve, eighteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty-five cents. Unemployment, seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-six cents. Court Reserve, three thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-six cents. And Office Reserve, one thousand, ten dollars and one cent. And then lastly, our monthly expenses for August were as follows. The General Fund had one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-eight cents. Water Fund, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and seven cents. Payroll Clearing Account, two thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-eight cents. And the Sewer Fund spent five hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents in the month of August.
Wonderful. I will take a motion to approve the Treasurer's Report.
So moved.
Thank you, Charlie. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much, Madam Treasurer.
You're welcome. And I, actually, I need to duck out.
All good.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Do you have that key?
I will make a motion, I will ask for a motion now to pay bills after audit. So moved. Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Charlie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All the vouchers are upstairs in the conference room.
Well, not quite all of them, but yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, the vouchers are available. Okay, all right, okay, so it's my turn. All right, we will start with the Police Report. In the month of August, we had two hundred and fifty-nine incidents. Hundred and twenty-three in the Village of Red Hook, a hundred and eight in the Town of Red Hook, and twenty-eight in the Village of Tibbely. And there were a hundred and four water tower security checks. There were seventy-six uniform traffic tickets. Thirty-two of those were in the Village of Red Hook, thirty-one in the Town of Red Hook, and thirteen in the Village of Tibbely. Parking tickets, there were thirteen in the Village of Red Hook, none in the Town of Red Hook, and three in the Village of Tibbely. There were seven arrests, one in the Village of Red Hook, five in the Town of Red Hook, and one in the Village of Tibbely. So there's that. I do not have an updated Fire Department report, so we will report on that in the next meeting. And, give me a sec. Oh, did I not print out my, my marriage report? Did I not do one? I did one, but I not printed out?
I don't believe I remember that.
Oh, okay. I did it, I just didn't, final, oh, yeah, but if you, I don't know if you have it.
Yeah, I think I did.
Anyway, I'll start with the Public Library, the report on the library. The Red Hook Public Library held their regular board meeting on Thursday, August fifteenth. Board members in attendance were Anna Gregg, President, Martha Depeppa, Vice President, Amy Houston, Treasurer, Sarah Devere, Secretary Gareth Davies, Lee Banatka, Grace Katchiedan was absent, and Alex Geller, the library's executive director, was there, and I was the only guest. Policy Committee. The Policy Committee has been reviewing their personnel policy. One item discussed was paid paternity maternity leave for full-time employees. Twelve weeks paid is proposed by the Policy Committee. The board agreed to review and compare with other library offerings. Policies are to be translated into Spanish by Board Member Martha Depeppa. Treasurer's Report expenses are at fifty-eight point four percent of the budget through the end of July, which is, through July is fifty-eight point three percent of the year, so this was on target. Income is at fifty-three percent of budget. However, fundraising appeal, it happens in December, so there's a slight skew to the year end. Programs spent, uh, programs are at eighty-six percent spent. Alex indicated this was due to grants. There were some unexplained changes in the balance sheet. The Treasurer, Houston, will confirm with the accountant. The accountant was not available before this meeting. There was discussion around the ongoing process of, quote, "cleaning up the books," unquote, that the outside accounting firm has been doing since they were hired in early two thousand twenty-three. Board of Directors was reminded that there will be a vacancy with the departure of Amy Houston at the end of the year. Everyone is encouraged to think of good candidates and encourage anyone interested in, to apply. And I would underline that for anyone who knows of anyone who you think might be a good candidate for the library, I would encourage them to reach out to the Library Board. As you all know, we, as the Village Board, need to approve any recommended appointment. Strategic Planning Committee. The committee reported that they have a few more focus groups scheduled in September. The Executive Directors' Report, Alex reported that the library's been having a good summer, and programs have been well-attended, foot traffic has been good. Alex talked about using space in novel ways, immersive library experiences to activate the entire library. The contractor for the Stucco and Porch Projects is MCT. Work will begin after contracts are signed. You can find his full report and all reports provided on the library's website. So that would be redhooklibrary.org backslash Board of Trustees. The link to the board packet is embedded in the text toward the bottom of the page. Their next board meeting is Thursday, September, oh, didn't put the date. It's the third Thursday in September, which is probably next Thursday, which is the nineteenth.
Can I ask a question quickly?
Of course you can.
Um, the thing about the grants and the programs, programs are eighty-six, what do you mean that it was due to grants? It means that...
So, um, to be honest, I took my notes, and I would have asked a question, but I, as a guest, I'm, so my interpretation is that the budget was set that does not include grant funding. So they have spent money that they didn't do a budget adjustment to reflect the grants coming in. That is, that is my interpretation.
Because my understanding was previous budgets, or the program was offset by a lot of grants. The other question I have is, well, it's not really a question as much as I know that the maternity, paternity leave, that is not a normal thing in, in libraries, public libraries. So it's a, it's kind of a, it's a big budget ask. Just making this...
Yep, no, I, yep. I think it's appropriate for them to be looking at what other libraries offer, for sure. Okay, thank you for finding that report. So on Sewer Project One, which is the project that we just completed, all final disbursements have been made. We approved the final payment to Carver Construction at our workshop meeting on August twenty-second. The final payment included an offset for the village's cost of reconstructing the odor control system, which is, which had been improperly constructed. The system is now installed correctly and functioning properly. The major outstanding item is the single audit. We are awaiting a draft of the single audit from UHY for year ending five thirty-one twenty-two. There will also be final MWBE reports to be filed with EFC, which is the state agency. Now that the final disbursements have been made, these reports can be finalized. Sewer Expansion Phase Two. We do have a working group that meets regularly, both to discuss the expansion as well as ongoing operations. We met August second, sixteenth, and thirtieth. The draft IUP listing has come out. We were not included in the bipartisan infrastructure funding. However, Delaware engineering plans to appeal. I'll have more update on that at the next meeting as well. Abraham's Park Task Force. The survey is on the village website. The survey has a Spanish version included. We are still looking to get more respondents, so if you haven't filled it out, please do so. We would very much like your input. And we had this whole discussion, the Cookingham West Trails will apparently be opened officially in late September. So we've talked about parking. The UPSU contract negotiations with the highway, the DPW and the Police Department is ongoing. Mayor, Deputy Mayor Carrollwell and I met with both unions in August, and we are progressing and hope to have a full agreement in the coming weeks. Fire Contract. I am scheduled to meet with the fire company later this week to continue contract discussions. On the Wia Water Projects. Charlie, you're not, not, I don't want to step on yours. If I talk about the Wia projects, are you good with that?
Yes.
Because you're talking about regular water use.
Yeah.
Got it. So the SCADA controls upgrade. The new SCADA system is on auto and running the water system. There are several punch list items being worked on, including replacing the chlorine analyzer. Initially, they were just going to replace some parts, but it's an older system, and so they're replacing the whole thing. And then adjusting the alarm system and adjusting how the syst, how the system alternates the pump usage. It was, we have several pumps, and the system should be just rotating the pumps in terms of which ones are used, and it wasn't functioning perfectly. And then just as background, the SCADA system controls the water system. This upgrade will increase the efficiency of the system of anti-construction. Is the contractor. The cost for this project is four hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred dollars. Cherry and Grave Street Water Main Replacement. Amity Construction is, they have brought back their equipment, and they are scheduled to have their crew on site tomorrow morning to complete the project, which includes completing the new water main on Grave Street, doing all the service lines to residents served by these water mains on Cherry and Graves, then cleaning up and paving Cherry and Grave Street. Both streets are closed except for local traffic. I will, and starting the week of September nine, no traffic will be allowed on Grave Street except for those who live there. If you do not live on Grave Street, do not try to go down Grave Street. So for example, if you're coming through the back of, see the, sorry, the old CBS, the, is that a karate place now? No, storage place. You cannot come out the other side. You have to go back out Route Nine until the project is complete. This contractor's Amity Construction substantial completion is contracted to be December seventeen. It will be done before then because they need to pave before the paving companies close. The contract, the cost for this project is one million, three thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. Water Tank Rehabilitation. This project is in the final stages of inspection, disinfecting and testing. The contractor is Worldwide Industries. The cost for this project is three hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred. And the project will be fully complete upon passing the final tests and inspections. So what's happening now is they are putting in disinfectant, filling the tank. It needs to sit. It's at least twenty-four hours, it's either twenty-four or forty-eight hours, and then they will empty the tank, refill it, test it, and if it passes all its tests, it will be done. If not, they will re-disinfect and do the process again. But that, that is, we are at the, at the end. And rumor has it, it looks lovely and shiny on the inside of the tank. The lead line inventory. Just to clarify, this is not a Wia project, but this is something that the state is requiring in October, that we turn in an inventory of the lead lines, both public and service lines in our water system. And we actually have a meeting on Thursday to review where we are in that inventory and to see where the gaps are. My expectation is that we will turn in an inventory that will not be a hundred percent complete, but will be, everything that we are finding is that we do not have a significant issue with lead in our lines. And so, but it is also a process that will continue, and we will continue to update with the information that we get along the way. There was no Dutch County Transportation Council in August. And then just a couple of others, if, well, actually, I think all of you were there, except Charlie. We have an all-electric police vehicle, thanks to a grant from State Senator Michelle Hinsey. We now have our first all-electric police vehicle for the Red Hook Police Department. We had a photo session at Linden Avenue Middle School on Thursday, September fifth, with the Senator, Lieutenant Hildebrand, Sergeant Sterrett, School Superintendent Dr. Warden, Deputy Mayor, trustees, school officials, and many of our police officers. Thank you for those of you who came, thank you. This is an exciting opportunity. And other police departments have all-electric vehicles, but they tend to use them more for detective vehicle or, they're not fully outfitted patrol vehicles. The, our vehicle will be fully outfitted for patrol work. Its primary role is as an SRO vehicle, but since school isn't in session all the time, it will be available for patrol when school is not in session. And I know you, I hope you're going to talk a little bit in detail about Hardscrabble Day, but I will mention that the police vehicle will be available on the, at Hardscrabble. I, I attended the Tibbely Community Day on August third at the invitation of Mayor Griffith. It was a fun day celebrating the Tibbely community. And then the Dutchess County Agricultural Forum. This forum is held annually during the Dutchess County Fair, and this year it was held on August twenty-second, Thursday. The county announced the expansion of the Ag Navigator to a full-time county position starting in two thousand twenty-five. The Ag Navigator helps local and prospective farmers manage the complexities of farming and the various regulations and requirements. They also act as a liaison for farmers, municipal officials, and economic development specialists. And I will say, I've gone for the last couple of years, and I always learn something, learn something new at these agricultural forums. And that is my, that is my report. Onto Deputy Mayor Carrollwell.
That would be a great person to...
Oh, wait, before we do that, yes, I am just going to report on the property tax collection. Property taxes due to the village in total are one million, four hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred, five hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-two cents. Total village parcels are seven hundred and sixty-three. Accounts receivable outstanding to the village as of eight thirty-one twenty, twenty-four is thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty-one cents. Delinquent accounts as of eight thirty-one twenty, twenty-four, there are twenty-one. Penalties due to the village as of the end of August is two thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents. Thank you, thank you to our tax receiver. And with that, Deputy Mayor.
I was just going to say that the Ag Navigator sounds like someone we should invite to the EDC. So, yeah, development now.
Sure.
Very interesting. Anyway, it's not my place to invite them, but it sounds like a good fit. Anyway, I would suggest. Red Hook Together. I attended the meeting held on September sixth at the End of Morph Inn, which is spelled incorrectly, I apologize. The Red Hook Central School District spoke about their upcoming capital project proposition vote. This past spring, their proposition for turf fields did not pass. They will have three separate capital projects up for vote this fall. The first is for various building upgrades, such as AC systems and replacing the columns in the facade of middle school. The second proposition raises the option again of replacing the grass field within the track with a synthetic turf field. The third proposition is for repairing two separate grass fields. There was also a robust discussion about mental health services in the region, as well as services available for unhoused persons within Red Hook. Anne?
I just wanted to clarify, I, in the, the second proposition, that there were some specifics around the type of synthetic turf field that has been identified and clarified, which is different or more detailed and more specific than the last proposal.
There was a, they had a whole spiel, I was trying to, kind of like...
I just wanted to clarify that it's, that there were...
There are things that are different, yes, and they made it.
Thank you, sorry.
There was, okay. Erin Canon, Vice President for the Civic Engagement at Bard College, is leading an advocacy roundtable regarding mental health care access and that has been meeting with county leadership. They have been successful in getting Sarah Ugali, Director of the Red Hook Community Center, appointed to the Dutchess County Mental Hygiene Advisory Board. A new subcommittee of that board has been proposed to focus on access to services for rural communities in Dutchess County. There was also talk about designated warming and cooling centers, which are not overnight shelters, as well as the New York State Protocol previously referred to as Code Blue. It's still referred to that, so we'll take out the previously word, for when the weather falls below thirty-two degrees. The issue is ongoing, as there are multiple warming and cooling centers in Red Hook, but they operate during often limited business hours and are not able to provide overnight shelter.
And my apologies, but I also have been, have attended these, the meetings. And my apologies, but I also have been, have attended these, the meetings, I forget what they've called it, the roundtable discussion. I have attended those meetings today.
Yes. I just thought it was interesting that she's been, one of the reasons why I added this is because I think it's good that people know that she, we have a community member that is on board, and they can contact her if they want, you know, if they have interests and they have specific things they want her to bring up or address.
100%.
It's important to know who's representing you. Okay. And October's meeting time and location is to be announced. The Red Hook Town Economic Development Committee. Bi-weekly meetings have been taking place at Village Hall on the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month at 8:40 a.m. There were no meetings held for the month of August. At July 24 meeting, the topic of pedestrian traffic in the village's business district and short-term rentals in the village were raised. Many of the town EDC members are pro-allowing short-term rentals in the village. Currently, short-term rentals are not an approved use within the village of Red Hook. EDC meetings will resume this week. Dutchess County Safety Action Plan Advisory Committee. Dutchess County Transportation Council is creating a transportation safety action plan, apologies, for the whole of Dutchess County. I attended the August 9 initial committee meeting on behalf of the village. A transportation and safety action plan is a requirement for each municipality in order to be eligible for the Federal Safe Streets for All SS4A program. Dutchess County is taking on this project on behalf of all the municipalities within Dutchess County with the hopes that creating a combined plan will be cost-effective and allow for a greater number of communities in the county to be eligible for the program. The advisory committee made up of various officials in various roles throughout Dutchess County will help the consultants create a plan that takes into account the local communities' data, unique conditions and priorities. I was pleased to hear that the consultants are planning on analyzing each of the municipalities in Dutchess County and will be recommending projects or initiatives that could help to make our shared streets safer for all of those who use them. The proposed plan must also align with the US DOT for a comprehensive safety action plan, New York State's DOT Strategic Highway Safety Plan, and the New York Governor Traffic Safety Committee's Highway Strategic Safety Plan, and the DCTC Metropolitan Transportation Plan. One of the challenges for a community that is as rural as ours is that plans such as the New York State Strategic Highway Plan calculate priority project scores in such a way that rural routes rate higher, much, rate much lower, I'm sorry, there's so many typos that I, much lower than urban roads that have higher volume of traffic and/or accidents. I was very pleased to hear that the consultants Cambridge Systematics Incorporated, Sam Schwartz Engineering and Weston Sampson Buyer Planning LLC plan to present priority rural roadways in comparison to other peer rural roadways in their report. I will keep the board updated on further progress and/or outreach. Does anyone have any questions that was like very worried, but?
I had a question for Red Hook Together. Did this school, when they were talking about the propositions, did they say where people can find the updated information about those in detail?
You know, I don't, they may have, if they said it, I don't remember. I apologize.
That's okay. I thought it was on the Board of Ed website. Because I think the propositions also, I think if you look under the Board of, Board of Ed, there was a recent meeting and it had it in the agenda. But that is, that is a reasonable question, they should make it available easily. I would think it'd be on the school's website. But I don't know.
Anything else? To sum up that whole thing, it's basically what's exciting is that they're going to be comparing us against other rural roads, which means that we will actually.
Have a chance of being noticed.
Yeah, and that they're going to actually propose projects that we could implement, which both those things are really exciting because, you know, it's nice to have professionals looking at that stuff.
And we're going to expect you to know all the alphabet soup that they have in here with all their acronyms?
It's a lot, yeah. And even the point system that they use has acronyms, it's, yeah. Okay. The Communications Committee meets every first Wednesday of the month at 1:30 p.m. in the Village Hall Conference Room. The September 4 meeting, at the September 4 meeting, the Language Access Grant was discussed as well as a newsletter, signage, press releases and various ongoing communications projects. We are excited to present our Language Access What Does the Village Do for You brochures at Hardscrabble Day at our new Village Question Booth. So please look out for that underneath a red and white umbrella in the Village Lot on Hardscrabble Day. Village of Red Hook Hardscrabble Events Committee. The Events Committee meets on the second Tuesday of each month at 6 p.m. at Village Hall. The committee met on August 13 and planned details regarding the Hardscrabble Music Festival, which is this September 14, 10 a.m. to 10 p.m., as well as Neighbors Night, which is this September 13, 5 to 6:30 p.m. The main stage lineup has been finalized. Laura Hope and the Arc Tones Yard Sale, Miles Taylor and the Upstate and FAT Incorporated. There will be a Kid DJ in the morning at 10 a.m. accompanying a free Kid Village Carnival, a Village Helper activity set to a busy town theme. Following Kid Village, there will be teen bands. There will be a variety of food vendors all day and the cider tent will open at 5 p.m. selling local beer and cider as well as Hardscrabble t-shirts. I'm sorry, I thought I messed up.
Trying to get these.
Awesome. Neighbors Night, a low-key neighbors meetup with free games, food and mingling will feature Annabelle's Bakery quiches. We want to thank Ann from Annabelle's for fitting in this event during her very busy last month of business. Her corner bakery has been a big presence in the village and her cakes have graced many community celebrations over the past seven years. So we are extra grateful that her delicious food will be part of our fifth Neighbors Night. The next public meeting will be on September 8 at 6 p.m. in the Village Courtyard. And that is tomorrow.
The next public meeting for events. Yeah, I think that would be the 10th.
That would be, today's the 9th.
Oh my gosh.
Appreciate that idea of going backwards.
I was like, it was yesterday?
Where is that cider tent? Yeah. I went over this so many times reading it, anyway. The Human Relations Committee meets every first Thursday of the month at 7 p.m. in the Village Hall Conference Room. The committee did not meet in July or August due to a quorum not being available. During the September 5 meeting, there was a wide range of topics discussed as well as possible projects or focus areas raised. Due to the limited number of members, we currently only have two members, there were no commitment to a particular project as of yet. Members were tasked with bringing suggestions for guests and/or topics for the next meeting. The next public meeting will be on October 3.
Question?
Yes.
If somebody is interested in joining the Human Relations Committee to help boost your numbers, how can they do so?
They can email me directly. That's M K J A R V A L at redhooknyvillage.org. Or they can email the Village Clerk and she can forward that on and I will forward it on to the committee.
Thanks.
Thank you for asking.
Yeah.
Village of Red Hook Highway Public Works Department. The Village Brush Yard Waste Pickups are scheduled for the first full week of every month, pending weather conditions and scheduling. Residents are reminded of the following rules. Avoid creating long-term piles. Place piles out just prior to pickup week. Lawn clippings and brush should be set out in separate piles. Place piles on the edge of your lawn, not on the sidewalk or the street. And the piles should not include construction debris, soil or dirt, garbage, stumps and/or branches longer than six inches in diameter.
And I just want to add, oh, you're still, that the pickup was supposed to be last week, but there were a variety of projects that came up during the week. So that is why the, many people still have brush piles. Those piles should be removed by the end of this week.
Piles should be limited to six by six by six and consider combining smaller piles with a neighbor to facilitate efficient pickups. I also don't have on here, but keep your leaf pile separate from your brush pile. That will probably be starting up in the next month or so because leaves are starting to fall already. Trash and recycling pickup. Please put your trash and recycling out before 5 a.m. on Monday mornings. Carpet bundles should be bound together with string or tape and paper recycling should be placed loose within a lidded tub or bin. And I recommend you take that bin back inside before noon because if not, somebody will think you are leaving it out there for free and they will take it. So.
Personal experience.
Personal experience. Potholes. You can notify the Village of Potholes on Village Roads by calling the Village Clerk's office or filling out the reported concern form at redhookvillage.org/concern. Please note that the village is not allowed to conduct repairs on state highways. Street light complaints. If you notice a street light out, you may notify Central Hudson directly by going to centralhudson.com. And scrap metal program. Revenue received since my last report is $1,467.60. And total revenue for this fiscal year, June 2024 to May 2025, is also $1,467.60. So that means since the program's inception in September 2007, donations have yielded a total of $56,330.44. Proceeds from the program go towards the purchase of tools and equipment for the Public Works Department. Residents and businesses interested in donating scrap metal may contact the Village Clerk's office to schedule a pickup. And that is it for me.
Awesome. Thank you. Onto Trustee Lang.
Okay, let's start off with Materials Management for, so in the month of August, the Village Highway Department collected 1.98 tons of recycling, made up of 0.9 tons of cumin go, 0.43 tons of cardboard and 0.65 tons of paper. The village also collected 5.6 tons of garbage, which was transported to Akro at a total cost of $689.93, which is composed of $646.30 in tipping fees and a $43.63 fuel surcharge. The village also paid $246.63 in monthly fees for the use of the Welsh Dumpster Service. And over the course of the month, the village collected $2,480 from the sale of garbage tags, broken down as follows. $1,604 at Village Hall, $600 from Taste Buds and $276 from the Red Hook Public Library. Next up, we have the Water Treatment Facilities Monthly Report. So during the month of August, the Water Treatment Facility treated 8,518,49 gallons, which is an average of 274,776 gallons per day. They always produce this nice annual flow chart and that, that's coming down a bit from a high in June and July. So that's a good trend to see, although the volume is still relatively high. But we'll look to see that trend continue.
Yeah, there are a number of things that happened in August that lead us to believe that it's not the running rate that we should have going forward. And September will have the, certainly filling the, the water tower tank.
Right, because they need to do that at least once.
Well, and there also will be the continued construction on Cherry and Graves, which shouldn't necessarily mean a lot of water use unless they, you know, unless they find a leak or what have you. So it'd be another couple of months before we see, we should come way down. But we're not there yet.
Yeah. We also sent off three samples for bacteriological testing and they came back clean, absent of coliform and E. coli bacteria. And during the month of, I don't know, I don't believe that was July, I believe that was August. The Water Treatment Plant used 75 gallons of sodium hypochlorite and that's an average daily use of 2.4 gallons per day. And I was looking at the daily numbers. There weren't any particular low-end days. So I mean, that again suggests that we're sort of heading back in the right direction, I think.
Yeah, I think we had, I want to say we had a valve replacement. We, they had further valve exercising to do and since many of these valves haven't been exercised in quite a while, they would often let the nearest hydrant flow to flush through the silt and what have you that might have been. So there was definitely some of that in August.
Well, I can probably tell you the days that that happened from the report.
And where was that?
Fisk and 199.
Oh, yes, so there was also a leak on Fisk?
Or Fisk and 199.
Baxter, was Baxter?
Baxter, right, Baxter and 199. Oh, yes, there, yes, there was a property, a property where there was a big leak and it, there's rock there and when they were in the process of fixing it, there was clearly a large reserve of water that was hanging out in the rocks. And so, that's right, I forgot, I knew there was something else.
And it didn't go in for quite some time.
Yes, so that's in the process of being fixed.
The week is no longer. Final fix is underway.
Yes, there you go. Charlie, I just wanted to go back on, on something before we move away from, too far away from Materials Management. I don't believe that Max Agway is selling our garbage tags anymore? They are, I was gonna say, I thought I saw something. So that, because I was looking to see if it had hurt our tag sale. Our tag sales don't seem to follow a particular pattern, so hopefully this will kick them up. So, never mind.
So, I mean.
So Max Agway had not been buying, they had not purchased another batch of tags and apparently they have now come back to buy, to buy some tags. So we're back.
But that shows up in.
In regular tag sales, they pay, they pay out, right?
Okay. Great.
Maybe that's why it goes up and down because that would mean that the, yeah, so that would hit, whenever it is that that hits, got it, thank you.
Okay, now move on to the Sawkill Water Shield Community. So the Sawkill Water Shield Community Leadership Committee met on August 21 in the Village Hall and continued discussion of various organizational needs and priorities. I'll update, some of the updates here. There's a new coordinator with Bard and the Community Science Lab at Bard, Desiree Lyle. They help out the Sawkill Water Shield Community with, they provide their lab and facilities for water testing there, have done for a long time. We reached a decision on logos for Hyvis vests, primarily for the amphibious project, the amphibious crossings.
Right.
That they oversee.
Now amphibious, would that be both frogs and turtles?
Salamanders.
It's mainly salamanders.
Salamanders.
But they're going to stop all amphibious being squished on the roads.
That's fair.
Fair enough, they're all important. There was also an update on a property owner on Banner Road who has been concerned about flows in that tributary to the Sawkill and wondering if it has, you know, if any of the problems are related to the outflow from the wastewater treatment plant. So they've been looking into that and having a look at some of the sampling that the Sawkill Water Shield Community does in different places on Sawkill. And I believe there's a report they're reviewing at the moment on that work. They also presented a letter to the school district on the proposed artificial field. Sawkill Water Shield Community is not in favor of an artificial turf playing field because of a number of environmental concerns and because of the focus on water quality in Sawkill. So that was drafted and submitted. Otherwise, they were reviewing the water quality testing that they did recently and discussing, they, they would like to do some enhanced. discussing, they would like to do some enhanced water sampling and really send samples out to an outside lab to run a full suite of testing, including PFAS and other emerging contaminants. And that is beyond the scope of the Bard lab and costs considerably more than the regular limited things that they sample for. So they are, I believe they are approaching the town and Mr. McKeon for funding to support that enhanced testing, partly because of it being sort of a nice baseline prior to any potential sewer district expansion into the town. And, yeah, that's about it. They will be meeting, next meeting is scheduled for September 25th here, Wednesday, last Wednesday of the month. Community Preservation Fund Committee, I don't believe there were any meetings in the month of August and I wasn't able to reach anybody in time to get an updated balance on the CPF. I don't imagine it's changed drastically, but...
So that number is the number from July, right?
Yeah. So I need to get that updated. So presumably still around $3 million.
And that includes the, what was taken out for the cooking ham?
Apparently.
So they use a lot of, they use a different fund for most of that, but it was, yeah.
There were a variety of, so you had the Community Preservation Fund, you also had the Incentive Zoning Fund, that Tradition put in a significant amount too. And, and so the monies that, and then I believe there were, well, I don't actually know, but when the, you also have the return of funds?
Yeah.
When Hardy Roots purchased?
Of course.
I don't know if you saw it, they just approved...
I think there was some state fund and protection funds that went into that project too, weren't there?
You know, it's probably worth asking what the details were of like what funds were used to purchase and what funds are coming back because also the house, the single-family home on the east side, the town board just approved selling that. So I'm not sure when the closing is, but that is coming up as well.
Because it would be lovely to use some of that for village projects in the village as well.
Yes.
Yeah, be paid, pleased to see that it was...
I paid into it. There you go. Absolutely. And you have a utility billing report to share with us?
Wednesday is another meeting. Yes, I do have a utility billing report for the sewer department for the month of August. Utility bills issued, $589.47. Penalties, finance charges issued, $1,054.12. Utility payments received, $23,126.21. And accounts receivable outstanding to the villagers of 9324, $14,831.48. And there were no bill adjustments before the month of August. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Trustee Bradley Ricard.
All right, so Village Green Committee, you can refer to the treasuries report, but the numbers I have are there are no community beautification expenses, which still the balance remains at $440.03. No charges for shade tree and the Village Green Committee checking account is $8,409.61. Our intern finished working with the committee and was able to update all of the known trees into a document so we can work on digitizing the inventory, which is super exciting. We are still filling in parts of 2015, so if you are a resident and had a tree planted by the village in 2015, please reach out and let us know what type of tree it was and where you live. In the last weeks of August, Jason and I canvassed neighborhoods in the village to find locations for our fall tree planting. And so it's that time of year again and we actually, well, the time that I wrote this, the order wasn't in yet, but as of today, the order is in at the nursery. We're still waiting for confirmation that the requested trees are available. We had a selection of four trees this fall with hoping to acquire for our village residents and they were the Kentucky Coffee, the Silver Wedding Bells, Yellowwood, and Mountain Nash. And they have a variety of heights, so working to continue to diversify our tree population and also acknowledge that some people may want trees and they may have wires on the front of their right of way. So we looked at smaller growing trees as well, as well as taller growing ones. We were able to look at these varieties based on their adaptability to fit with our climate soil and our current canopy diversity. Residents and businesses interested in having a tree planted on their adjacent village street or New York State Highway right of way, volunteering for planting days, which the next one is coming up in early November, or sponsoring a Village Green Community Beautification Project, you can contact myself or Jen Kavanaugh, the village clerk. And meetings are open to the public and we welcome all to join. Please reach out if you're interested in joining the next meeting, which is going to be a planting, planning meeting next month, I believe. For the sewer department, we continue to work on Phase 2 expansion. As you all heard earlier, we just completed Seeker and we're waiting to hear back on all of our grants that were submitted. We meet every other Friday and if you have concerns about the expansions and are, or are currently in the sewer use area and have comments, concerns, please don't hesitate to reach out. There's also an expression of interest form up on our website if you're wanting to connect into the sewer, which requires capacity and it will put you on our list of places to consider and puts you on our radar. As a reminder to all the residents, whether you're in the sewer use area or not, please be kind to your pipes and only put in the three Ps. And while in the kitchen or near other drains, no fats, oils, or grease, also known as fog, as they clog up the pipes and make the system stressed. What goes down the drain matters. And if I am clear, there is going to be a little fog demonstration at Hard Scrabble Day on Saturday, so if you have any questions...
During Kid Village in the morning, yes.
Come by Kid Village to see a demonstration about fog.
If you'd like to volunteer to man that. That'd be great.
And you can refer to C3ND's monthly report, but for the month of July, the old wastewater treatment plant utilized about 9,000 gallons of, treated 9,000 gallons a day and the new plant treated about 39,000 gallons a day. So we are right cusping on our overall capacity. If you are in the sewer use area and your emergency alarm goes off, please don't just push the button. Make sure you call the number on the panel so that we know that the alarm is going off. After you call, you can silence your alarm. And please don't open the box or tamper with any of the village-owned equipment. For the speed limit initiative, the engineering firm has been finishing up the data collection and reviewing the school speed limit task. At the end of August, they were looking at state road sections in case there were any applicable findings to add to the school zone. Oops, that's supposed to say zone, not zoom. There's much to consider when thinking about the speed limit and the school zone. We plan to meet with the school district superintendent to discuss options and thoughts once we have the report at hand and know what data we are looking at. The Town of Red Hook Greenway Trails Committee, there were some construction detour signs made to direct people around the Bard building site adjacent to the Tivoli Base entrance that were hung. The town supply of printed maps was exhausted and the committee had extra funds available and discussed using those funds to purchase more printed maps. The Brinridus has a committee from Bard to split the cost of a bike repair station in central campus near the shuttle stop and along the, along the village-to-village trail and the EST, which I don't know what that stands for, I apologize.
The EST Trail?
Yes.
Empire State Trail of them?
Correct, yes, Empire State Trail. He provides a model that it's in other places along the Empire State Trail and this would be located where there are surveillance cameras. He would handle yearly maintenance and cover the cost of the replacement parts. It's the same type of bike repair station that is in talk to be added potentially to the village as our movement towards Climate Smart and getting more pedestrians and bikers out. And if you're curious about what the stand looks like, this one, there is one at Star Library or along the Empire State Trail, you can find some. The Winnekee Land Trust is making slow but steady progress on the installation of the sprint rail fence at the Aspenville entrance and this hot, wet summer has been tough for volunteers to join. They are hoping to have a few more volunteer, volunteer days left. And then the Greenway Trails is interested in spearheading a task force with the village and Climate Smart Community Task Force to look into alternative offering pathways to the center of the village. So if you are interested in joining, please reach out either to myself or Lisa Whelan, the chair of the Greenway Trails Committee. And there were requests to fill out State Way Transportation Master Plan Survey, which is available to the public. If you're interested, you can click the link on the online version of my notes and remember that trails are an important part of the transportation infrastructure. For the Climate Smart Communities, the task force met twice during the month of August as a hybrid meeting as one of our members is still out of state and there were a few illnesses. We have completed our round of the assessment with Lindsay, our new representative from Cornell Corporate Extension, and we're moving forward. Additionally, Climate Smart Communities is in conversation with climate stakeholders in the area, including Bard Sustainable Hudson Valley and the Village of Reinbeck CSC and the Town of Red Hook CAC and is partnering to host a free screening of Beyond Zero coming up on September 26th. And the story is of a CEO who transformed his company in pursuit of sustainable and regenerative practices for the earth. And that is the end of my reports for tonight.
Wonderful. I was, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I was just gonna say, do you have my tree in your map? Because I know that Brent put the tree that's on the south side of our lot on Broadway.
I would have to look. The intern updated most of that, so I would have to check the list.
Possibly, because it might have been 2015. That was my only, because it was before we moved here, so.
It's a, it's a good, I will, I will do the control five.
Great. Thank you.
And actually, just going back to the communications committee, for those of you who signed up for my newsletter, it went out today at 3:30, my September 1. And if anyone did not get it and would like to, they can go to the village website, redhookvillage.org, and sign up for the mayor's newsletter. I have news about the village and things going on and feel free to sign up. Okay, trustee Appenzeller is not here. I'm assuming that if anyone has to share whose reports, if not, I will do that. And we have, I can update on the planning and zoning committee. We met with Bonnie Franken, our Franson, our planning consultant, last week, week before. Anyway, the next, she is proceeding on with the next project, the next steps of the project and so we should have something probably to review. Now would be a good time to review the planning document because that, one of the next steps is to finalize the planning document. And there was something important I was gonna say and when it comes back to me, I will share it with you. But that is, that is the next step, is to finalize the planning document and also then to begin the process of, of the zoning revisions. And that's it. Oh, so that's the planning report. Oh, I know the, now I remember. I asked Bonnie to put together a, let's call it a contract with a not to exceed number, something for us to think about and I think I'll put on my list to have us discuss, maybe we can do that at our workshop. We have, we need to, we need to commit our ARPA funding by the end of this year. And so one of the thoughts I had, given that this planning work is a one-off, it's not something that will be ongoing for the specific project, and so I thought perhaps we could commit that in a contract, the not to exceed for the planning and have that be something that we identify as, as funded by ARPA. But feel free to think about any kind of project that we could commit to formally by the end of the year, but I will bring that up, I will put that on our workshop agenda, is to review how much funding we have left for ARPA, what the projects are that we discussed so that we can move forward in, in actually securing, there's a word that I'm missing, but actually committing the funding by the end of the year. We just have to spend it by 2026. So for the village of Red Hook Building Department, for the month of August, 11 building permits were issued, two certificates of occupancy were issued, eight certificates of compliance, four municipal searches, no orders to remedy stop work orders, do not occupy notices or court appearances. There were three complaints, one for 25 Fisk Street relating to lawn maintenance and goats. Another was 5 Fisk Street, overgrowth and blocking vehicle views. And the third was 7,000, 7350 South Broadway, overgrowth, blocking vehicle views. There was one fire inspection. Planning Board actions, August 8, 2024, meeting. Site plan, public hearing for St. John Street tabled to September 12. Site plan approval granted to property located at 12 Garden Street. Site plan approval granted to property located at 7592 North Broadway. And site plan for 25 Fisk Street tabled to September 12. And the zoning board of appeals did not have a meeting in August because there was, there were no agenda items. And the proceeds from the building department for the month of August were $4,966.40. And I believe that is all we have for that. I do know that regarding the public spaces initiative, I know the events committee will be having a meeting with some portion of PSI to discuss the Pumpkins in the Park event in October, or proposed for October. I do not have anything else. Anybody else have any other general business they'd like to?
I had one thing about the speed limit study. Once you get that data, we could possibly send it on to the consultants, because they're trying to scrape any kind of data. The consultants for the safety action plan, the Dutchess County. So if, whenever that happens, that would be great to...
And I think that the consultants are looking, so they're also looking for any, any work that the county has done to incorporate into the work that, that they're doing for us. So it's a, it goes both ways.
Okay, so maybe we should connect them if that's, I have...
Absolutely.
Yeah, that'd be great. Perfect.
Any, any other general business? Since there is no public here, I would assume there's no public comment. We did the voucher review or we did the approval. I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
There we go. Thank you very much. Very productive meeting.